Hey, Dwayne. I'm great, thank you. Hope you are. I know. I don't want to complain. Might get worse.
Thanks for noticing.
Oh, there you are. Oh, I, I know. I, I, I get, I get taps all the time that I know I better not flinch. You too.
Okay.
Stop saying.
Sean. I have a new notebook. I'm sort of sly like, remember when you were a kid and you'd get a new notebook and paper? I'm still that guy.
I'm just kidding.
I just want to say that.
Don't you remember getting fresh news?
Okay.
Yeah. First day of school, you know, everything's new.
Did you use the Blue Horse type on the dash lines?
No, I didn't.
When you were in first grade, did it make your left?
No, I, it was.
Blue Horse. That was the brand name. And it, it was from the top.
Uh huh.
And so you opened it this way.
Yeah, yeah, perfrated at the top.
And then it had lines and then a dash line and no line.
Yeah, I did do that. We all did that. It's kind of the law, kind of the rule.
Hello.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Would you mind please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for the invocation?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're honored tonight to have Mr. Zach Bland, CEO of Goshen Valley. He just moved into a wonderful new office space in the middle of Etowah tonight. So to celebrate all that they're bringing to our community, we want to ask him to give our invocation tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for everyone's contribution to this council and to this great city that is Canton. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, gracious God, Lord, we thank you for the opportunity and the freedom allowed to us to gather here this evening. Lord, the freedom to come before you and come before this greater community, you know, with the spirit that is Canton. You know, a spirit that is connected, that is gracious, that is thoughtful. Lord, a spirit that above all looks for ways in which we can help those around us to serve others, to be mindful of the person standing next to us. Lord, I would ask that you would continue to just speak a truth and a conviction into the lives of the men and women that have been placed in the position to serve on this council, that have been entrusted with the vision and with the focus of what Canton looks like moving forward. Lord, I know at Goshen Valley, the young people that we serve, the families that serve them have benefited from the work done in this room. Lord, we ask that you would continue to allow this place, that is Canton, above all, to glorify the work that you're doing and do so through the honor that is shown by this council and the work that comes from it. Lord, we say all these things in your son's holy and precious name. Amen. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Zach. And again, thank you for all you do for our youth, our families, and our communities. So we appreciate you. We'll have to call our April 21st, 2022 meeting to order. This time we'll have consideration to approve the agenda. Any changes, additions? Mr. Peppers?
Mr. Mayor, I need to request the addition of a new business item, uh, which is discussion and possible action on a contract to purchase approximately six acres at 2939 Marietta Highway. Then I need to ask for two old business items. Discussion and possible action to ratify a sales contract by the downtown development authority Jones Building and discussion and possible action to allow a time extension to strike for the completion of the Westward Trail expansion.
Okay. So we'll add, um, the purchase of six acres, new business item E. And on old business, we'll add for item D, um, discussion, uh, of sales contract, the Jones Building and item E, discussion of the time extension for the Westward Trail. Any other additions or changes? Any motions?
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion. We have a couple informational items, the technical report, uh, just for information only, no discussion. Mr. Green? I'm sorry, we have, I, I need to prove the minutes first. I got ahead of myself as usual. So you have in your packets the draft minutes from April 7th meeting. Are there any changes, additions, revisions, or motions?
I move to approve the minutes.
The motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members vote for the minutes. Now, Mr. Green, if you could share your two informational and technical reports with us, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, uh, there are two items on tonight for in- informational items. The first one is MPA 2203-001. This is a request to amend the master plan at the Bluffs to approve single-family detached housing. A hundred and twelve is what the applicant is asking for. I believe Mr. Peppers has received some questions from some of the council members concerning the amount of units that are on the ground and have been approved out there. For Bluffs, Pod B, Phase One was approved for a hundred and two townhomes. Phase Two was approved for forty-two townhomes. And Phase Three, they are asking for a hundred and twelve single-family detached homes. That gives a total of, let's see, two hundred and fifty-six living units in Pod B. Lennar has been approved for a total of four hundred and thirty-three single-family homes. You add the two numbers together, that comes up to six hundred and ninety. And the Bluffs has been approved for a total of seven hundred and fifty living units. Uh, this information will be included in the staff report for the public hearing as well. The next item on the informational is case number CUP 2202-003. This is a request for a conditional use permit approval for the properties that make up Misty Court and Misty Way. They're asking for two hundred and ninety-five, uh, apartment units. And again, some questions have been asked of Mr. Peppers and he's passed those along to Mr. Patton and myself. And it was determined that the particular property was annexed and rezoned to the city in 1999 and given the zoning designation of R5. At that time, the zoning, the zoning ordinance then, R5, was the multifamily district and it still allowed for fifteen dwelling units per acre. When the code was updated, we had our zoning map amended, that zoning went to RM15. So that property has been zoned for multifamily for twenty-three years. There was also some questions about the requirement of two entrances. Speaking with Mr. Kula, our Fire Safety Services Manager, the 2018 International Fire Code, Section D 106.2, requires any multifamily development to have two fire apparatus roads. There are certain requirements as to the, uh, construction of the roads and the weight that they have to hold, taking into account the weight of a, of a ladder truck, a pumper truck, or what have you. For this property, there's also a distance, well, for any of the properties, there's a distance requirement between the two entrances. And it's the diagonal, half of the diagonal distance on the property. And this particular one, these, it's, I think seventeen fifty, one thousand seven hundred and fifty feet is the diagonal distance of this property. It's shaped like a rectangle. It goes a pretty good ways back off of Highway 20. That would require that the two entrances be nine hundred and fifty-five feet apart, give or take a little bit, using the, the GIS, a mapping technique on our website. The property is not even that wide, so they may have some issues in meeting the fire code. And as we've discussed before, there's not a variance that can be asked for from the fire code. We had that, um, issue come up with Dominion off of Bluffs Parkway. Again, this information will be contained in the staff report that you'll receive for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Thanks for other announcements. Uh, we always look forward to celebrating Georgia Cities Week, which is next week. And so tonight we have a resolution and I believe we're going to be sharing during the reading of the resolution, uh, on the screens, uh, all the activities that we have going on in the city next week, uh, which, which are a lot, so. Uh, so tonight, City of Canton Resolution Number 20220421, Georgia Cities Week, April 24th through the 30th, 2022. A resolution of the City of Canton recognizing Georgia Cities Week, April 24th through the 30th, 2022, encouraging all residents to support the celebration and corresponding activities. Whereas city government is as closest to most citizens and the one with the most direct daily impact upon its citizens, and whereas city government is administered for and by its citizens and is dependent upon public commitment to an understanding of its many responsibilities, and whereas city government officials and employees share the responsibility to pass along their understanding of public services and their benefits. And whereas Georgia Cities Week is a very important time to recognize the important role by city governments in our lives. And whereas this week offers an important opportunity to spread the word to all citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence this branch of government, which is closest to the people. And whereas the Georgia Municipal Association and its member cities have joined together to teach students and other citizens about municipal government through a variety of different projects and information. And whereas Georgia Cities Week offers an important opportunity to convey to all citizens of Georgia that they can shape and influence government through their civic involvement. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Canton declares April 24th through 30th, 20, 30th, 2022 as Georgia Cities Week. Be it further resolved that the City of Canton encourages all citizens, city government officials, and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. So we hope to see you, uh, at some of these great events and to celebrate Georgia cities, but most importantly, to celebrate the great city of Canton. Mr. Peppers?
I, I would just mention a few of these. Um, so of course proclamation and that kind of kicks us off and, and we like to take more than a week to celebrate our city. Uh, tomorrow, um, we'll have our Police Department at Public Works over at Hasty Elementary School as they learn about some of the equipment that we have in the city. Um, and also we have a production that's kicking off at the theater for the next couple of weeks, uh, that the public is invited to visit, uh, buy tickets for. On Saturday, we have our Earth Day celebration at Cannon Park. Uh, we also have a recycling event that's going on at Ridge Road, uh, as well. Next Monday, we're excited about having our first Teen and Young Adult Job and Resources Fair. It'll be here in City Hall. Um, we also have, um, our Public Safety Citizens Advisory Board, which is kicking back up next Tuesday night at six o'clock. Our Diversity and Inclusion Task Force is going to reboot next Wednesday at six o'clock. Uh, we are doing a, uh, employee appreciation luncheon next Thursday, uh, for our staff. We have coffee with a cop that comes up next week as well. Um, it'll be at the YMCA on Friday. I don't remember the time exactly on that one, uh, but we'll make sure that it's on the website as well. Uh, and then for our staff members, we're having our Teen Canton Huddles next week. So I'll be meeting with our staff to go over a few things that we have going on, so that's exciting as well. So, uh, you know, lots of good things going on in the city.
Lots of great activities, room for everyone to get involved and, uh, celebrate. So we look forward to you joining us for some of these meetings and events, so. Any other significant announcements anyone wants to share? Okay. Moving along to our ten-minute public input. We have one, uh, citizen signed up, Ms. Eloise Thomas, I believe. Would you like to come up to the podium and? Yeah, you need to come up and, uh, so, so we can record you and just state your name and address. And we, we appreciate having you here, Ms. Thomas.
Um, I'm Eloise Thomas. I stay at 291 Christopher Street, um, Canton, Georgia.
Perfect.
Anything else?
That's it.
It's, I'm just my first time here. I'm just feeling, and I wanted to see what was the matter.
Yeah, go ahead. We're happy to have you, so.
Thank you.
Sorry. Nope, nope, great. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
You had any comments? Okay, thanks. Thank you. Ms. Thomas, great to have you here. We hope to see you at, at future meetings, so. We have quite a lengthy consent agenda tonight. Most of it is, um, the second readings of the ordinance amendments that our ordinance, uh, uh, committee has been working on. We had the first reading at the last minute, uh, meeting. And so since it is a second reading, I'm going to read all of those, uh, titles. And if there are any of those or any of the other consent agenda items that any council member would like, uh, pulled off for further discussion, of course, we will do that. So bear with me as we get through this, um, but it'll certainly move us along, so. Item A, approval of proposed fiscal year 2022 budget amendments. And a B, approval of 2022 city government auction and disposition of certain city assets. Item C, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 18, Article 3, Peddlers. Item D, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 18, Article 10, Door-to-Door Sales. Item E, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 18, Article 11, Massage Establishments and Spas. Item F, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 19, Section 19 through 5, Burial Rights in Public Cemeteries. Item G, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 22, Elections. Item H, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 26, Emergency Management and Services. Item I, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 34, Offenses, City, um, Item J, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 42, Fire Protection. Item K, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 50, Streetlight Districts. Item L, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 58, Section 58-1, to accept OCGA 40-6-144 from adoption of the rules of the road. Item LM, approval of ordinance amendments for Chapter 62, Vehicles for Hire. And those are the items on the, um, consent agenda. We discussed a lot of these at the, the last meeting. Any further discussion? Anyone would like any of those items removed for further discussion?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All members voted for the motion.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Since these have been now approved, will they be updated on the website immediately?
As soon as any can send them in.
Yes, they will be updated, so. Again, I want to thank our ordinance committee, uh, review committee has done a great job. I think, uh, gotten through, uh, the majority of the ordinances now. And again, uh, Mr. Dyer, Mr. Patton, and everyone who, who helped with those, so, great work. So we'll move into old business. Item A, discussion and possible action on proposed records management systems, RMS, for Canton Police Department. Chief Turner?
Afternoon, Mayor and Council, and it's, uh, good to be back up here with you guys. Um, since I last spoke to you, uh, what we have is, for your consideration, is the, uh, contract for the purchase of a completely new records management system for the police department. And in the memo that I previously, uh, put in your packets, it detailed, uh, pretty much everything around that purchase. Um, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update tonight. The, uh, the, some of the numbers I've put in there, um, were correct at the time. We've gone back and did a pretty good review of the, uh, what we wanted to purchase and realized there were two small additions we wanted to add to our purchase. One being a district attorney or a portal-type share. Uh, it's a small module that will basically allow anyone from the police department, but more specifically our, uh, sic- criminal investigations division, our detectives, to take cases as they work cases. It may be you have, um, photographic evidence, you have a lot of documents, and we'll be able to share those with our local district attorney's office, um, which is a huge help in, in a lot of different ways. But number one, just the paper volume alone is going to be a really good savings for us. We have some pretty thick cases that we actually copy and send to the DA's office. And, uh, this will eliminate that. It will also eliminate a little bit of time as far as going back and forth up there delivering cases. And it will also help as far as the accountability of when those cases are given and to whom they're given to. So we'll have a record of that with this portal share. And the other thing is the, um, crime mapping. So we have a public piece now that's a third-party vendor that's separate from the internal software that we run. And, uh, it's called crimereports.com. And I believe that costs us about thirty-five hundred dollars a year annually. We renew that every year. Um, within this software is a piece that is almost identical to that, and it was just about half the cost for us. So what we're going to do is we're going to delete the current system that we use and we're going to add that piece with this purchase and have it all in one system. So it kind of consolidates some of our things that we use. So when you look at the price difference, I think the price in the memo was about a hundred and forty-one thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for the initial purchase. It would take it to one fifty-one four oh five, which is still well below what we had initially kind of, uh, budgeted for. And, um, also, I'm happy to report the laptops, IT did a really good job. Mike did some, uh, a lot of research on pricing of those Panasonic Toughbooks that we would really like to have in the cars. It's the backlit keyboards and it's also the touchscreen that really would marry really well with the new software and how it works. So to be a lot more efficient for the officers and be a lot more easier for them to use. Um, we had earmarked about three thousand dollars a piece for those units. And, uh, Mike with IT was able to get those units at about seventeen hundred and sixty-seven dollars, which is almost half of what we originally planned. I say all that to bring to you the price is going to be about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And we had initially earmarked around four hundred thousand. So that's, that's a pretty decent savings. And, um, I also have Ms. Julie Ward. She is our sales rep with, uh, Central Square Technologies. Uh, with, like I said earlier, we were able to piggyback a lot of different, uh, presentations from other vendors and we were actually able to meet Ms. Ward when she was presenting for Swanee Police Department. We were able to watch that process and they're about halfway through their whole installation now. And, uh, in speaking with their chief here recently, I've checked with him about every other week and they're very happy with it and they're very happy with the way the process is going. And, uh, we're very happy that we were able to, um, choose this vendor because locally, within the metro Atlanta area, there are a lot of agencies that use this specific software. And there's a piece in that software called P2P, Police-to-Polic, where we can actually share data among all those agencies that have that system. So that's really nice, too. But there's a lot of things like that. I just didn't want to give you all, all the details, but, uh, it's a really good system for us and we're really excited about it. So, um, be happy to answer any questions and if I can't answer anything, it might be too technical, I've got some backup with.
Thank you, Chief Turner.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Uh, you mentioned total price of two hundred and thirty-five thousand. The cover sheet says two seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five thousand. Is that the difference of the savings on the laptops?
That's the biggest savings, was the laptop savings. Yes, sir.
Great.
Yes, sir. So we should be, we should be at about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, a hundred and seventy-nine dollars and seven cents. That'd be for the hardware purchase of the laptops for the cars and then all the software purchase.
Great.
And then the, the other thing I wanted to make sure you knew, the annual cost, I think, was initially around seventy-two and some change. It will go to seventy-five and some change, which we're currently paying about sixty-two or sixty-three thousand a year now.
Questions?
Do you have a question?
Ms. Turner?
Last time we're, thanks for everything you do for the city, by the way.
Yes, sir.
Last time you were here, you mentioned, um, five-year fixed costs for the software maintenance.
Yes, sir.
I guess that's in the seventy-five range, uh, now annually. Do you have a sense in speaking with other municipalities what that cost might mean in year six through whatever?
Right.
Because I know our last, our current system we've had for a long time.
Typically, they run about five percent. They usually try to do about a five percent cap if they do an increase each year.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? Ms. Water?
There are no other questions. I, uh, just move to approve the, uh, records management system for the Canton Police Department.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Are there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All say nay. All members voted for the motion. Congratulations. Another, you've been working on this for a long time. And we're excited that, uh, you'll have, uh, the management, uh, system that you need, so.
Thank you, sir.
So item B, discussion and possible action toward a task order to Black and Beach for engineering services for intake screen improvements at the water treatment plant. Mr. Hotabian?
Yes, this is the, uh, second phase of our water treatment plant improvements. This is for the design. The first phase, um, is actually, we're scheduled to advertise that, um, May the 5th for the folliculator improvement. So that'll take care of the first phase. This is for the design, um, to redo the intake screens and some electrical modifications and some minor structural modifications.
Thank you. The total cost, one hundred, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, one twenty-two?
Yes.
And, uh, let's see, we have, uh, made it clear this time that that was budgeted, correct?
And, um, design is about six months, construction will be about eight months. Right now, the construction is estimated in the two million dollar range.
Okay. Questions?
Motion to approve the, to award the task order for Black and Beach for engineering service for intake screen improvements at the water treatment plant.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members approved for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hotabian. Item C, discussion and possible action on the city's property and casualty insurance. Mr. Ingram?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We provided at the last meeting, uh, some proposals and some insurance information as a result of our RFQ that we submitted earlier. Uh, we received back a number of qualification packages from various brokers. We narrowed that down to two, our incumbent and Gallagher and Company, our incumbent being Insurance Office of America. Uh, Gallagher provided the lowest, uh, responsive, uh, proposal for the, uh, property and casualty insurance renewal. And we recommend council consider changing the city's agent of record to Gallagher and Company and directing Gallagher through the appropriate lines of insurance with Garma and Key Risk. That is moving our property and casualty insurance to the Georgia Interlocal Risk Management Agency, which is a division of GMA. And, uh, keeping our key risk, I'm, I'm sorry, keeping our workers' comp policy with our current carrier, Key Risk. We're, we're not wanting to change that at the time. We've been very happy with Key Risk. Uh, they've served the city well and we're going to, uh, we're proposing that we maintain our insurance with that, uh, that carrier.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. And can you remind our council and our citizens of, uh, the cost savings we're paying for? I think you discussed those last meeting.
Absolutely, Mayor. Our current, our current policy is totaled approximately five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, these two policies, our renewal is going to come in at around four hundred and sixty, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We don't know the exact figure yet because we have, uh, a few items to iron out, if you will, on some of the, uh, uh, subordinate coverages like cyber security. So we need to iron those out with it, but those, that'll literally just be a few thousand dollars difference on some of those items. So it's a net savings of almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Nice. We love savings. Questions, comments? Ms. Wilson?
I don't have a question, but I've had, I guess, the opportunity to, um, to have the service of Key Risk. And I can tell you all that it was, it was seamless. They sent a person to be my advocate every time I went to the doctor and it was very well done. And so I just wanted you to know. And because of that, I make a motion we approve.
Second.
Motion approved and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Great work. Uh, we will now, uh, discuss the two items that were added to old business. Item D, discussion and possible action to ratify a sales contract- to Old Business. Item D, discussion and possible action to ratify a sales contract by the Downtown Development Authority for the Jones Building. This was voted on by the DDA yesterday. Today's, yes, yesterday. So it's been a busy week, so. There's peppers.
That's correct. If you recall, at, at a recent meeting, the mayor and council approved an intergovernmental agreement with the Downtown Development Authority, allowing them to sell the property on behalf of the city with your approval of the final contract. We provided you a copy of that. It was approved yesterday by the DDA in their public meeting. The sale would be to Penn Hodges Properties and Ten Cent Properties, Penn Hodges Family Assets and Ten Cent Properties. The purchase price is two point two million dollars. There is a period of due diligence, but with your approval, they can move forward with that particular transaction.
Okay. Obviously, very excited about this. It's been a long time coming. We're be happy to have this building back on the tax roll, happy to have lots of activity back in the building, have it a center of attention. I think the proceeds are going back in the DDA to do some other great projects and development in, in downtown. So our DDA is doing a great job. Thank for the work on this. And Ms. Schmidt, who is on our, our DDA rep on, on that board. And also, the, the Jones Building is also in the, in our TAD district. So we'll immediately improve our, our, our TAD funds. So it's, it's, it's a good day, if, if you so choose to approve. Not that I'm trying to impugn you so. Further discussion, comments?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, and I move to approve the contract.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those say nay. All members voted for the motion. Congratulations to everyone, so.
Thank you.
Said all, all along that it wasn't about getting someone in the building, it was about getting the right person in the building. So we now have a proven developer that has proven itself at the Mill in Etowah, and what they can do and the potential of these buildings. And again, couldn't be more thrilled. So good day for Canton. Item D, E, sorry, discussion and possible action to allow a time extension to strack for the completion of the Westward Trail expansion. I believe Atkins, the project manager, if you're going to, sir, you're going to present this for us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. My name is John Boudreau. I work with Atkins. Joining me this evening is Bill Livingston. Bill is the engineer of record for the old ball ground Santeri Sewer Extension, and I'm the project manager for the trail extension. So we're working together to get the project delivered for the city. The contractor has recently requested a time extension for the, for the project due to delays. Some of the unfore- unforeseen conditions include obtaining the materials for the project, the Santeri sewer pipe, the extensive blasting that occurred on the site, as well as the easement and acquisition of that easement to have full control over the property. The, the delay is over three hundred days that it took to acquire the, the easement to, to access the full property per the contract with the city and the contractor. It states clearly, if the contractor does not have access to the entire property, he is due that, that amount of time that he doesn't have access. So again, we're respectively requesting additional days for the contractor to complete the project and be added to, to his current contract.
Okay. And to be clear, how many days are you asking?
Three hundred and one days.
Okay. So when did we become aware that the extension request was going to be for over three hundred days? I mean...
We just recently received it, but back last year, we had a meeting almost a year ago today, to today. We had a meeting with the city where we reviewed the access, the limited access that we had and not having control of the full site. The contractor brought forward that at that time, if you didn't have the easement by June of last year, there would be extensive delays in the project. The easement wasn't obtained until later in September of that year, so.
Okay. I thought I heard you say that we had a delay in, in securing the easement for three hundred days. Is that...
Three hundred and one days. The, it was from basically November twentieth twenty to September seventeenth twenty-one, where you didn't have control over that property.
Are you expecting, so I just went from a real big high to a really big low, because we have been, been telling our citizens that we were hoping by the end of summer this trail will be complete, and they are excited about it, and we're, we are obviously excited about it also. But do you think it's realistically going to take three hundred and one days to complete it, or do you think there's a...
Certainly, it's our hope that he can complete it quicker. We had a discussion with them in the last few days. They're, they're just about complete with the installation of the Santeri sewer. They're supposed to have that complete by May, this, the end of, end of May. And then, if you're familiar with the project, there was a significant grading activity that occurred on the site on this Edgewater property where, where the delay in easement occurred. That material that came off that, that hill has to go back on ba- basically be replaced. So he's, he's saying it's roughly between four and eight weeks before he gets the grading complete where he can then start the trail. We, we envisioned that the trail will move quickly. It moved fairly quickly on the opposite side on the Etowah Park, once we overcame some of the obstacles there as well. But it's the contractor that's completing the, the trail construction, is the same contractor. And once, once he got started on the site, it moved very quickly. So there is a bridge that also will be required to construct, and we're looking at the opportunity of kind of reducing some costs that, in the project. So we'll, we'll be looking at that further. So that may also expedite the project as well.
Okay. So now you threw in that reducing costs comment there. Appreciate that. So I understand, I understand the delays. And I'm sure you understand our disappointment, but Atkins is a great partner for us. And again, anything we can do to expedite that and beat that would be greatly appreciated. Further comments? So I believe we are asking for action to allow the extension?
It, it, basically, it's a change order to...
Change order?
Yeah.
I mean, I have a question. Could, I, what, let's, when people ask us why there's almost, I mean, three hundred days is almost a year. When, when residents ask us what the delay is, what is the, what is the regular people's explanation for what, what the problem was?
I think the big issue is the fact that when we gave them the initial notice to proceed, we still had a couple of easements. And, you know, John will tell you, I went round and round in a meeting with, with the, with the builder about that particular issue. But the bottom line is, even if we disagreed with them, the work's still going to have to be done, and we would have to bring somebody new out there to finish the project. I'm very disappointed that it's going to take up to three hundred and one days, but I will say this, it was a big project because there's sewer involved. That's a big line, lot of grading that had to occur. They've done a good job when they've been out there. I'm not opposed to giving them the days. I would support that you give them the days. I think we just have to tamp down the expectation of the public in that this was a major project along the river, down the hill, down the cliff from one property, basically, to get this sewer line project in and to get the trail done. And maybe we can finish it up and, and gift it to them as a Christmas present as opposed to a summer present.
Correct. I just wanted to make sure I was on the same page. I appreciate that explanation.
And on the issue of the easement, I, I, we were caught a little bit off guard. Most of the property owners, almost all voluntarily gave the city easements. So we were kind of cut off guard, and that you had to kick into the legal process. That, that ended up because there's always issues. But I was not aware that there was a clock running. And, you know, we probably could have moved a little faster, but, and they were working the whole time. But, but there was, we did not have full easement rights on this one property until June or July. I think it may have been August of last year.
Okay. Ms. Wilson?
Do we, I heard you say we hope it'll be a Christmas present? So you think the, the length of the extension will allow us to finish the trail, the Westward Trail, by Christmas?
The, the three hundred and one days actually takes you to March, next March. So, you know, one of, one of the issues that we had on the last section of the trail was that as construction activity is occurring, people are walking because the concrete path's being constructed, and people are walking amongst the construction activity. You know, when you have Santeri sewer that's thirty to forty feet deep in the ground, you're blasting rock, you can't, you can't have people near those types of activities. Contractor was very clear and said it's a liability for not only them, but the community at large. So, you know, we're going to obviously push them as fast as we can. We're going to, we're going to make some changes to hopefully make the project simpler, to expedite it. So it provides a link from, from Heritage to Bowling Park, the main connection. So again, the three hundred and one days, just so we're clear, takes it to March. Our goal is obviously to push them as fast as we can to get them to do it. But this is, this by the contract, these are the days that they're due, is my understanding. Mr. Dyer might feel differently about it, but the contract that the city's prepared and the contractor signed states clearly that they're due the days if they don't have the access.
Will Atkins be willing to give us maybe monthly updates as how we're, how we're doing on that schedule on those three hundred days? If we're ahead of them, or, well, we're not going to be behind, but if we're ahead of them, so.
Yeah, we'll, you know, we continue to meet with them on a regular basis, and they, they give us an updated schedule with their invoicing. And again, to this point, it's been all Santeri sewer that's gone in the ground. And, you know, we, we're out there verifying that the quantities that they're requesting payment on have been installed and completed. And so.
Thanks, sir.
Move to approve the change order.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. All members voted for the motion. Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Appreciate it. We'll move into new business. Item A, discussion of task order one for the downtown pedestrian corridor with Practical Design Partners in the amount of eleven thousand eight hundred dollars. Ms. Watson, you work quickly, so.
Yes.
Thank you.
So this item is for the pedestrian corridor between the mill and downtown. It's in our tenants to have a better connection between the two. This concept will, or will, PDP will develop three concepts and cost estimates for each of those concepts, and then we'll bring them to you to discuss, and then we'll develop one final concept. And we'll be asking at the next meeting for approval of this item.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? It's very exciting to get this underway. Questions, comments?
Just one question. I know this is our kind of first run with these folks.
Yes.
Aren't you happy with how it's going?
Yes.
Been a good, good experience so far?
Yes. We are working with them on the transportation master plan. They're a subconsultant for modern mobility, and I've been really happy. And they work a lot with Cherokee County as well, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Further questions, comments, motions?
Move to approve the task order one for downtown to the mill pedestrian corridor with Practical Design Partners.
You can do it if you want to.
Yeah. I did it again, so.
Second.
I'm sorry.
No, no, no. It's, it's not you. It's, it's me.
You go, Joe.
It's done, Joe.
I'm ready.
I'm an eager little mayor, I guess. We have a motion, so we have a second.
Yes, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those nay. All members voted for the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Watson. We're excited about it, so.
Whatever path he wants.
You know, we just like to get things done around here, so. Item B, discussion and possible action on prefabricated restrooms at Heritage Park. Mr. Dodson?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm here tonight to get approval of, a request approval for the design and cost for the prefabricated restrooms that we would like to install at the parking lot at Heritage Park, more specifically behind the mill or the lofts in the Popeyes in that particular parking lot. I would like, Mayor and Council, keep in mind that the cost that you see here is not our final cost all-in. We will have to run utilities such as power, water, sewer, pour slab for the prefab restroom, and then as well as do a sidewalk two in around the actual unit itself.
Okay. Thank you. And I believe also there are, I think we discussed that there are different design and finish options. You show one, I think on the last page of their presentation, it has the more kind of stone and finish.
Yes.
You know, so it's not the, like the, just the metal module thing that, again, which I think this last one's, you know, very attractive, but, so there are options that we can look at to...
There are. There are several different options. You can do a brick look. You can do a block look, cedar siding look if you'd like. Now, given that some adjust the price in your favor, some adjust the price the other direction. And the same thing will be said for any of the amenities that we do inside and around the restrooms. If we do hand dryers, which we would definitely want to be doing, replacing the paper towel, towel rolls for hand dryers just to prevent any, you know, littering or unnecessary use of paper products. But, so all these different things that we will be adding and subtracting will adjust, you know, here and there costs. We do have an all-in pre-approved budget of a hundred thousand. I suspect that with the slab and all the utility costs, probably another twenty-five to thirty thousand will be added to the cost of the prefab unit itself.
To the sixty, to the sixty-seven thousand, so. And how long, with approval, how long do you think it would take to get the restrooms out there? I know we've been wanting to do this for a while.
So I spoke with him yesterday. He said less than a hundred and twenty days is what they're looking at right now.
Okay. Questions?
I do have a question. So take, take us through the, the base price and then all the a la cartes that you think are going to be added. That number equates to sixty-seven thousand, is that right?
So this particular unit here is a DNR location in the state of Georgia, which they've done several of these particular units. This unit here is the price that you see here. And this particular unit is the one that we have chosen, maybe not necessarily this color, this, this all-in, you know, with the, the amenities that they have on here. But the two restroom, and what we plan to do, instead of doing a female side or the male side, we'll do a unisex, both ADA compliant. I'll, I believe, I do have the cost here for it. The base price for that particular unit is forty-five thousand and some change. So you start adding the actual toilets, and then you start adding, you know, what kind of sinks? Do you want porcelain? Do you want stainless steel? All those little things will adjust it.
Sounds fair. And then, once we decide on this, we're going to mimic that at Bowling, is that correct? Is that what the plan is?
That is my hopes. I, I would like to mimic these going forward in the areas of need throughout the city.
Without, without...
To completely eliminate the portable restrooms would be ideal.
Makes sense. Without putting you on the spot, when, when would you hope to, hope to add restrooms at Bowling?
I have put it in to, as a budget item for next year.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. Further questions?
Well, it's under new business. Did you want us to take action tonight?
Did you want us to take action tonight?
Yes.
Yes, it's, it's, it's possible action.
Okay.
Actually, this time it says.
All right, well, I got scared after Ms. Wilson's little.
I know, and I'm not making any more action, but I'll, I'll second it.
That was, I asked for action, Ms. Wilson, so you're perfectly in line there, so.
So I'll move to approve the restrooms at Heritage Park not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? All members voted for the motion. Voted for the motion. Thank you, Mr. Dodson. Be happy to get these, uh, installed there, so, I know our citizens will be happy about it, so. Item C, discussion of energy conservation services program. Ms. Pennley and Mr. Ingram, the pair.
If I can apologize to Mayor Council, I'm gonna jump in here and just give you a few comments as to kind of how we got, got to this spot before Ms. Pennley, um, speaks. Uh, we issued an RFQ for energy and sustainability, uh, services about a year ago. And just as a reminder for our audience and for those listening to us at home, that was one of its, you know, sustainability that, uh, for natural resources that council adopted a few years back, so we know that this is an important, uh, item for council and for the community. We issued that RFQ, uh, we, we put it out to the market and unfortunately, we only received one qualifications package back. You have a copy of that attached, um, it's a quite lengthy qualifications package, it has a lot of information on the company itself and I'm sure y'all are as anxious as I am on getting and reading that full qualifications package. But, uh, when I asked a few of the vendors, you know, kind of what, why did, why did you not, uh, provide a qualifications package, the, the general response that I got was, uh, alluded to the environment that it is right now is, is, you know, we, we wanted to be a part of that with the city of Canton, but, uh, we have a lot on our plate. Cause I know that a few of y'all probably have as well as I did, you know, why just one? I was expecting, uh, quite honestly, I was expecting probably about four qualifications package. So I wanna give y'all a little bit of that information before, you know, had, before you had any questions for Ms. Pennley. And of course, I'll take questions if you have any, um, obviously, Ms. Pennley will, Ms. Pennley will, she, uh, she may have a few comments as, as to what the sustainability committee had, cause they, they reviewed it as well. And, and lastly, I wanna point out that, uh, we have a representative from Schneider that's more than happy to come at the May fifth or the May nineteenth and answer any questions you may have of them. We are not asking for action tonight. We're just bringing it to.
I got it, I got it.
Settle down, Ms. Wilson.
I got it.
But, uh, anyway, I'll turn it over to Ms. Pennley, I apologize for jumping in there, but I just wanna kind of give a little, considering we just got one qualification package, I just wanna give y'all a little bit of, uh, background information on that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, um, briefly speak. Uh, we had an environmental sustainability committee advisory board meeting last night and everyone seemed very, um, perceptive, you know, excited. They're looking to, you know, see what all Snyder has to come back and say with what kind of, uh, along with our scope of work with the things that the city is wanting to do, um, the scope work that was in the RFP, that is. Um, they did have a, a few questions and concerns and we're gonna take those back to Schneider. It wasn't anything, um, unreasonable or, you know, it was really just to make sure that any equipment or systems that they put in not necessarily are theirs, that the city would have control over theirs in case, over the systems in case moving forward, um, you know, say we bought another building and they would be compatible and we could hire another contractor to come in and, and, uh, uh, maintenance those. So that was pretty much it. And then we had also, um, when we spoke to, uh, Schneider Electric, me and Mr. Ingram on, uh, one day earlier this week, I'm prepared to take any questions y'all have if, if myself or Mr. Ingram can't answer them, we'll take it back to Schneider and it, and that'll be something that we can address, um, if they decide to, if you guys decide to have them back on the fifth or the nineteenth, or we can even send it out in a memorandum.
Sure.
And also, uh, there is no cost associated with this, uh, agenda item. I propose that we come back and ask for council, uh, to approve, uh, Schneider Electric as the city's sustainability and energy efficient partner going, moving forward through projects or something like that. We'll work on that, work with Schneider, um, on some wording to that, but there's no cost associated with that. And, and obviously, when we get to projects in the future, for example, the HVAC or working with the Sustainability Committee on the Green Initiative, you know, we'll bring those projects back to council individually and based on what type of project that is, it'll have different cost structures with it. For, um, with the, with the green, uh, initiative, it may have to be a flat, uh, fee. With the HVAC projects, it being such a large project, they may be involved with doing a lot of the management of the project, there's obviously gonna be a different structure as far as the fees that Schneider records. So all of those will come back before council each individually.
Thank you, Mr. Ingram. Questions?
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Waterman.
You stated that there are no funds, we haven't committed any funds to Schneider, correct? So there's projects in the future and you've mentioned that you're, will be requesting approval for the city of Canton to be, or Schneider to be our partner. Is there anything stopping us from, you know, uh, seeking out another company? Nothing? Okay. I'd say my only concern is that only one company responded to the RFQ. And the energy landscape, the energy, if, just for better terms, the energy business is, it's wide. There are so many companies out there that do exactly what Schneider does, okay? Locally, I could tell you about twelve, but, uh, like, uh, we discussed, no one else responded and just wondering how many people, I think, uh, did ask, how many companies were part, were those RFQ sent to you? Correct? So.
Yes, uh, we post those to, uh, the Georgia Procurement Agency, we post those to basically websites where people can come, you know, and look and people, uh, that, that's, they know that. This is, you know, it's not something hidden. Now, we have spoken with some companies just in conferences and meetings before, for example, Georgia Power, you know, we, we've been working with them with our solar array and our, we've, they've known about it. Uh, so we have spoken with some of those companies, uh, in, in just our day-to-day business, so they knew about it. But we did not, I did not send this out to A, A Company A, Company B, Company C, just soliciting.
Okay, so my last question then is, do you think the fact that there is no dollar amount tied to this is the reason why only one company responded?
I do believe that, that is one of the factors. Um, I did have someone's basically, uh, that kind of alluded to, well, we just weren't sure, you know, if the, if the cost benefit was there, especially considering the environment. Right now, we're slammed already, we just, too many questions.
And I was just gonna add, I think, I think the other approach the city could have had is, look, we know we need to replace our HVAC systems in our buildings in the next three to five years. So we're gonna put out an RFQ to find an engineering firm who can manage that particular project for us. And then we would be sitting down and we would be discussing that individual project and the cost associated with that maintenance on that particular project. At the same time, when we went forward with this RFQ, we were also under the time constraints of ARPA to have funds expended or committed towards projects by the end of 2024. Now, with our budget amendment we did earlier tonight, we're not under some of those same conditions that we were in at the time. And I think at the time, we felt like it was more valuable to find a firm that could be our partner to help expedite some of those things. We may not have to expedite them in the same way. Doesn't mean we may not use that firm, but it may mean that we look at projects a little bit differently.
And, and that's a good point, Mr. Peppers, about the ARPA, I think that, that contributed to the environment of the love work.
And additionally, that may have contributed to who was willing to put in a proposal as well, because not only were we as a city under those same time constraints, every city in the country was under the same time constraints. And I think everybody was trying to cast that net to find a vendor that could work with them.
Yeah.
But I think the changes on the federal side to how some of those dollars could be allocated and spent that we've taken advantage of might cool that market a little bit. I, I know, what was the company that was talking to us up front about, um, our door systems and retrofits on fixtures that was local?
Well, that was part of the EZIQC program.
That's right.
Which is a, a state program that has pre-qualified, I think, uh, about a dozen companies, you know, there's a lot of companies that are part of EZIQC, right? And we could still use that, that program.
And when we first received the first round of federal funds in CARES, we were working under the impression that we were gonna have to spend those dollars very quickly. So we had a lot of vendors contacting us, hey, you could do this, you do this, you could do this. And so we started meeting with them and very quickly, we realized if we're gonna spend our federal funds that way, we need somebody who's thinking about the overall picture as opposed to each individual project.
Ms. McGrew?
Is there a contract involved with this that we signed with Schneider?
There will be agreements and contracts with each of the projects, I foresee.
With the projects?
Each of the projects.
So we're not locked into a contract with them?
We're not.
Cause I was gonna ask how long we were locked in, but we're not, thank you.
Ms. Tovell?
Given that this, thanks for this information, it's really helpful, uh, the landscape has sort of changed, you know, the ARPA funding, for instance, is in a general fund now. Um, there, there's not this, maybe not the scurry of activity amongst all the potential vendors that there was. Given that and given the fact that we sort of passively, which is the right way to do it, I totally agree, put that RFQ out for people that will come to us, is there value in us reaching in a proactive way out to some, you know, some usual suspects, if you will, that, that might not have made comments, that might be interested? Cause I'm, I'm in agreement with Mr. Waterman that that makes me very uneasy when we have just one potential vendor on any project.
And let, let me add, you know, I don't know that we often do this, but we can reject the qualifications and we can resubmit the process if we, if that's the choice of council. I don't, it, it, there would be a delay, a quite significant delay, and I do know of a few projects that we need to get going on quickly, like HVAC, for example.
And the one particular situation with this is, we're basically saying to Schneider, look, you're an electrical engineering firm, you're an environmental engineering firm, we're gonna treat you just like PDP, Atkins, Black and Beach. We're gonna create a relationship, so if we have an emergency project come up, we can do a task, and we can get it immediately done. But there's nothing, just like, just like with Atkins, Black and Beach, PDP and others, there's nothing that says we can't have a similar arrangement with other firms that do the same thing and just make it project specific. Because one firm may be much better at this type of project than something else.
I just get really concerned when, when the word monopoly comes up, when there's only one, you know, one player, so, but I, I get.
But we're not bound to use them for anything.
We're not bound to use them and I, I, you know.
I understand.
I understand, like, the, the concern, I mean, it, it makes sense, but when we send out RFPs and post them, you know, on sites, you know, in Georgia that we do everything else and, you know, we can't really control who, you know, chooses to bid on them. I'm not sure, I'm, we can send out things to certain vendors, but I don't know what the legal, ethical concerns are there. If you're choosing to, to send them to certain vendors and not others, I don't know if there are any concerns with that, or?
There, there would, it's a professional services thing, you don't have to do any particular process, but, um, so no, that wouldn't be.
But I think since there's, you know, we're not voting on, hey, we're hiring them to do this, you know, it's just to be available, but when a project comes along, we can do that, but, Ms. Ingram?
And may I add, and I get in trouble by the attorney for saying this, I don't know, we, we want full disclosure, we want y'all to see exactly where we are in this process, but I'm saying this to say, I don't know that I'd necessarily be in error to say, thank you, Schneider, we, we, we like to work for it. Now, let's talk about the HVAC and I not have even brought this to y'all's attention, just, y'all would have seen Schneider as part of the HVAC. I'm not saying, I don't, I didn't want to do that, but that, that's going to, I think Ms. McGrew asked, is, uh, we're not gonna be asking for an approval of a contract. We're, we're fully disclosing, this is what we did, the RFQ, we only received one qualifications package, here's who that indivi, that entity is, and we're going to work with them on the HVAC, the Green Initiative, uh, uh, we had another project that we have to do quick, but anyway, we're gonna work with, with Schneider unless y'all say, you know, no, you know, want us to put out another RFQ or do something differently.
Ms. Pennley, can, can you just remind us again, what was the Sustainability Police Commission, did they give a recommendation or, or was nature of their discussion on?
No, basically for the, in the RFQ, the sustainability portion was to help with a green plan to go along with ARC Green Communities to help us with that and also for a sustainability plan that was going to be reachable goals, obtainable goals for our city, um, not just a generic, eh, you know, kind of, goals.
And what is the timeline for the ARC?
The, the.
Cause we are, we are on a timeline there, correct?
Yes, the ARC, um, Green Communities application is due, uh, May twenty-seventh and, um, part of, part of that is for the sustainability plan, which is, is a, a large portion of that as well. It is something that we can start working on in-house, um, along with the green plan, we've already kind of started working with that with, uh, Bethany Watson and, um, but it would be helpful and fine tune it, cause it's, it's a large, it's a large application.
Any further? Waterman?
The only last thing, this is, I promise, um, measurement and verification, uh, portion of Schneider's plan here, um, I don't know if it makes sense, what they're offering, if we should ask if, uh, it be verified by a third party. Right? So they're telling you where, we're providing you with all of these savings, right? So it's like, uh, trust me, I'm, I'm, you know, I just saved you a million dollars, but I'm not necessarily seeing it. Not to say that that's gonna be the case, but maybe that's something that we consider.
Absolutely, that's something I struggle with, um, is, is because a lot of the, a lot of their costs are going to be hinged on these potential, potential hypothetical savings and stuff, so no, as, as a CPA, that's certainly something I struggle with.
Right, well, looking at their org chart, I mean, there's a lot of, there's gonna be a lot of overhead in whatever it is they charge you, so, um, we just ask that when it comes to measurement, verification, anything that they, if they do, uh, HVAC, um, you know, change out or measurement of savings, that we kind of really pay close attention to that.
Yeah, let me add also on the HVAC project, which I identified as one of the projects that's gonna have some urgency very soon, um, they actually volunteered, they said, we're currently working with Macon Bibb County and she actually today, this morning, gave me, sent me an email, said, here, go talk to their city managers, as it said, talk to them, ask them how, what we've done for them. So they've been, they've been fully open and transparent with, here's our, here's our list, they deal with a lot of individual, a lot of entities in Georgia and, and am I, and I, I don't know if they clearly identified in this certification page, but they're the largest energy, energy company in America, so they're a very large company, you know, good or bad.
And we have worked, they've done work for the city before, correct?
City of Canton?
Yes.
No, sir.
They've made presentations before.
Oh, um, yes, they did a, a, a pro bono, they, the audit and.
The audit, yeah.
Efficiency audit.
Okay, we're making a presentation, so.
They have quite a lengthy list of references. Schneider has a lengthy list, list of references and I'm sure that would be one way we could vouch for them. Their proposal looked very good.
Further discussion, questions? And you're not asking for action tonight? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Item D, discussion and possible action to approve request to amend the enterprise zone agreement with the Mill and Etowah to include construction permits for 2020. Mr. Peppers? Mr. Peppers?
Good evening. As you'll recall, we had an enterprise zone agreement that was approved for the Mill on Etowah several years ago. As part of that agreement, they were eligible for fee waivers as it relates to permit fees. As you can imagine, the project's taken them a little bit longer than they originally intended. Last year, we did an extension to waive the fees for the year 2021. They have requested an extension for the year 2022 based upon the finish of the project out there. They do believe they will have all of the construction completed this year. To date so far, they've paid in about $4,700 in permit fees to the city. If council wishes to approve the extension of the waiver, we would reimburse them for. The Mill is our only enterprise zone in the city, and it was approved, originally approved by the state as an enterprise zone nearly a decade ago. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
And is this, this request is only for, to extend the permit waivers for permit fees?
That's correct.
None of the other things are, the enterprise zone agreement?
That's the only thing they've requested as part of the enterprise zone agreement.
Okay.
Is to ex, ex, extend the waiver process for permit fees.
Okay.
Everything else is currently, everything that was in the original agreement stands as it is. This is just the addition of those permit fees for, for this year.
Questions? I, I believe discussions, we, we do, and they anticipate completing their projects this year. Certainly, I don't have any issue. It's been a great project, and they've done what they said they were going to do. But I know it would be the third extension, I think. If council did approve, I would just ask them to consider, you know, add in condition that, you know, this would be the last year, 2022 would be the last year that we would extend this, but. Questions, comments?
I would move to extend the enterprise zone agreement with the Mill on Etowah to include construction permits for 2022. And that will include the reimbursement, the $4,700.
Second.
Motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All members voted for the motion. We added an item E, which is. Let me see here, make sure I got it right here. Okay. Discussion and possible action on a contract to purchase approximately six acres at 2939 Marietta Highway for $1,290,000?
One correction I will make, when we did get the sales agreement back, it's 6.5 acres as opposed to six acres. The price on the contract is $215,000 per acre, so the actual price is $1,322,250. This property is almost across from the South Canton Fire Station. It sits between Ivy Drive and Marietta Highway. As we've discussed with the council, the city does not have any parkland in the southern part of the city. This is a relatively flat piece of property, and would give us an opportunity to do some type of green space in that area. And also to start a good city project on Marietta Highway as part improvements of that entire corridor. We have an agreement that has been signed by the seller, and if council wishes to act, we can act immediately. As part of the contract, we have not asked for any entitlements, we're not asking for any zoning or anything like that. They have requested $50,000 in earnest money. They do have a property on site and that they have a lease on, and so they want to make sure that the city's willing to sell the site before they deal with a particular lease on the property. Happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Thank you. So if council did want to take action on this, they would need to correct it to 6.15 acres and correct the total to $1,322,250?
Or you could simply say $215,000 per acre, and the calculation in the sales agreement will.
Okay, that's easier. Questions, comments? Ms. Wolf?
Were we able to get any comps on property nearby for that sort of? I'm sure there wasn't a park, but do we have any comps on any property that has sold for that much?
I actually did look at that. The Martins property down the street sold for $240,000 an acre.
Okay.
I think it was.
Okay.
And, and we're not paying $215 an acre, because we're giving them a donation letter for a portion of it.
No, we are paying $215 an acre. They originally wanted $250 an acre.
Right.
And they're taking a donation of $35,000 an acre to offset their asking price.
So I think the Martins property was a little more per acre, but.
Okay, thanks.
So I, I make a motion to approve the purchase of 6.15 acres at 2939 Marietta Highway at $215,000 per acre.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? All members voted for the motion. And just like that, we have parkland in South Canton.
Just like that.
Okay.
Fixing it.
Fixing that ward, one decision at a time, so. So, Mr. Peppers, I believe that brings us to your report.
I have a few items to report to. First, I want to start with an update on a conversation that we had earlier today. As you know, last year, the city agreed to partner with the Canton Housing Authority on their RAD application, which would basically have given them the ability to use some state financing to redo all of their housing along Ship Street to also accommodate the housing that they currently have at Jefferson Circle, all new townhome product. They were denied by the state on their application through a competitive process. They are currently working on a re-application and have asked the city to participate in that. Through our discussions and through our roadmap, seems like a great project for the city. Their application is due on May 20th. We have been in conversations with them over the last couple of months, and they've been working on their scoring for the application. The request that they have in front of us that we received today is for the city to consider a loan to the housing authority at a cost of $40,000 per unit. They plan to construct 70 new units, so that would be a loan of $2.8 million. It would be a 20-year loan, a fixed loan. I believe it was 2.67% interest rate on that loan. As you also know, one of the conversations we had at the city council retreat is the ability of the city, if they plan to move all of their housing product down to Ship Street in new product, would be for the city to have some type of opportunity to acquire the property they currently have at Jefferson Circle and make some improvements out there, whether it be new parkland, some new owner-occupied housing and things like that. The conversation that we had with them today, Mr. Ingram and I, was that the city might have more of an interest in providing a $2.8 million loan, but then forgiving a portion of that loan over time in exchange for the purchase of the property at Jefferson Circle. According to the, Paul Robinson, who is the developer that's being partnered with by Canton Housing Authority, that's, that's a workable deal. It would require basically that a, a, an appraisal be taken of the property that's over there. We would have, HUD would have to basically approve that appraisal value. We don't feel like it would be 2.8 million, which would be a little over $400,000 an acre. We don't think that's going to happen. So we think we'll be under the 2.8 altogether. From a timing standpoint, they'll turn in their application in May. They will have some record of an approval or denial by December. If they're approved, they feel like it will take them somewhere between six and eight months to close the whole deal, and that they could start construction later next year. That does not mean the Jefferson Circle property would be available to the city immediately, because they'll have to stage housing as they are replacing housing along Ship Street. But ultimately, for the city's investment of $2.8 million, we would be able to help them get brand-new units built on Ship Street, which replace their units currently at Ship Street and at Jefferson Circle. And we would take ownership of the land at Jefferson Circle for a transformative project within that particular part of the city. What we talked with them about today is that since we were kind of agreeing to those terms as an idea to bring back to council, they will put the documentation together, and we will bring that documentation to council at the next council meeting for your consideration of approval. We would like to get it approved at the next meeting, so that we're not in the one-day rush that we had last year in approving it the day before the applications are due to the state. If we have any particular questions, we can work on those. If that's not a deal that you like, if you want to make tweaks to that, that's fine. They just want to be able to work on that over the next two weeks. Mr. Ingram and I both felt like that was a, a good deal for everybody, and that it, it advances the things that the council has talked about in the retreats and in the roadmap.
Mr. Peppers, would that, I guess, funding for that support, would that be, I assume, through our TAD and through maybe ARPA?
It'd be TAD-eligible. It's definitely an ARPA-eligible project, but as we've received $10 million of ARPA into the general fund, it's a general fund-eligible product. The cash side's not the issue. And ultimately, we wouldn't have any cash in the project until after the closing takes place, which would be sometime next year anyways.
If, if approved, right?
That's correct, if approved by the state. And, and I will, I will say this as well, in an initial conversation with the housing authority and, and with their developer, you know, I feel like the city really wants to see that housing improved in general. And I even, I even made the comment to them the first time we met, I said, if you get turned down by the state, what would stop the city from making a loan and let's tackling this a few units at a time? Of course, the only, the only drawback to that is the cost that it might be for the city, but I think we're all so passionate about seeing that take place. If it is denied, we'll step back and we'll figure out what the best deal is moving forward. But I think, I think from their standpoint, the narrative that they've put together on the application is based off the fact that the city is heavily involved in seeing this take place. This will, this will bring up to standards, above standards what we have in public housing in the downtown area, and that ultimately, the city is also working on an affordable housing component in the Chrisler area on property that will no longer be owned by the house.
I just want to take a moment and note that this is exactly what city government's for. We're helping all aspects of our city with this project. We're improving neighborhoods, we're making housing more affordable, we're helping families, we're reducing crime. We're doing all the good things. This is all a great project that's working on. I just want to take a moment to commend all the city staff that's been working on, the housing authority's been working on it, Mr. Tolan, his efforts with affordable housing. I'm excited about this. I was excited about the RAD last year, and I was hopeful that it went through. This is an even better project, it's even better for the community there. And as we talk about it and we look at the details as they come through, I just encourage everybody to keep an open mind and open heart as we talk about it, so, thank you very much.
Ms. Tovell?
To add to, thank you, Mr. Carlin, appreciate that. And I, you know, I think we're all rowing in the same direction here, and, you know, these units haven't even been refurbished since 1984, I believe. So it's high time that we step up collectively as a group and, and help any way we can. Appreciate you and Mr. Ingram and staff for everything you guys are doing, thinking outside the box. I know that the relationship with the housing authority is, is the best it's probably ever been. They view us as partners. That's not always been the case. And I'm just really proud of this, this body. I'm really proud of our, our city leadership for stepping up. This is a, this is a major project that moves our city in the right direction, partnering, locking, you know, arm-in-arm with our Canton Housing Authority. So just kudos to everyone, and I'm, I'm really, really bullish and excited about what the future can hold, not could, but can and probably will hold for, for those residents. I'm also very excited about and comforted, I guess, with the fact that the housing authority, if there's any, any group, any organization that does not want to displace people, it's that group. And so those folks that will be moved around will be moved around with a lot of respect. And I'm certain that they'll be welcomed back once they have a brand-new home to, to live in, so thank you to everyone.
A few other items I would bring up next week. One of the items, of course, we talked about at the retreat, is our property up at Laurel Keene. A meeting scheduled next week with a design firm to think about the master planning of that site for an affordable housing initiative in the city, so that's exciting as well. A few project updates. We've already talked about the old Barrow Ground Sewer tonight, so I'm not going to go into that. On the water pollution control plant, we continue to work on that. There, there is a slight delay on some of the mechanical components. We're, we're working through that right now, but, you know, luckily, we have seen a decrease in our flows over the last year, so that's given us the ability to get to work on some residential projects. But right now, everything's still on schedule, and we're very excited about how everything's going there. If you've driven anywhere around downtown, you'll notice we're almost completely done with the vertical part of the Archer Street parking deck. It was interesting, last night, we had a conversation about Sbloss, and the county made the comment that, that they were trying to figure out their parking deck, and even the mayor of Woodstock that was there said, well, maybe y'all should talk to the city of Canton, they know how to get it done quickly. So, so I take that as a pat on the back from our, our southern sister city. We will have the request for proposals on sanitation, they're due April 28th. And we have a sanitation committee meeting on May the 3rd at 6:00 PM, where we will look at those and start going through that process. The traffic signal at Teasley Middle School is out to bid right now. We hope to bring a contract to you in May for that. We will not be able to have the full signal in place by the start of the school year, but part of that is something we can't control, which is the availability of the mast arms and things like that. We do believe we'll be finished with the construction part of it, the turn lanes and everything in the road. We just may not have the actual signal in place when school starts, but that's about as fast as we can go on that particular project.
Mr. Peppers, do you think it'll happen during the next school year?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. No, I, I think the lead time was like 10 or 12 weeks on the mast arms.
Okay.
But you know, if, if we approve it in, if we approve it in May and they get a notice to proceed in June, I mean, there's a likelihood that that equipment's just not in on the first.
I just have only one more year left at Teasley, so I just wanted to know.
Understand.
I've got eight, so.
We, I will tell you that the signal that we get the most requests for at Reinhardt College Parkway and Reservoir Drive, we do know that GDOT has our information, they have our warrant study, they have our plans, they have our design plans in front of them. They just have to agree to them and approve them, and, and I think the last update we had is that they had sent it down to Atlanta. So if you, if you know anyone at GDOT, you might mention to them that we would like to have a signal there. On the Canton Transportation Master Plan in the coming weeks, they'll be starting their engagement exercises with our citizens. Couple of different options there. There's a, there's a mapping process that citizens can go in, and they can drop in comments based on specific locations in the city, which I think is a great component for us. Another option is basically a virtual open house. So you log in and everything related to the plan is in one virtual room, and you can move about the floor yourself and make comments and interact and take surveys and things like that. And there'll be additional opportunities for interaction also. We have the two concepts that were initially proposed on Burge Park. We now have the cost, cost concepts back based upon those. And I know in speaking with Mr. Carlin, we're trying to get together a community meeting where we can go out and talk about what we have in the concepts. Hopefully, we can also talk about what our plans are with Jefferson Circle and the housing authority at the same time, and, and have a good conversation about recreation in that particular area. Contract was signed on the Lee Street mural. I've, I've called it the Lee Street mural because it's on Lee Street.
That's a perfect name for it, Mr. Peppers.
Hope that's okay. And so that project.
Call it whatever you want.
That project will be moved. That project will be moving forward. We have, we've received notice that the resurfacing of the tennis and basketball courts at Bowling Park's gonna take place over the next seven to 10 days. They've already started, so they're even faster than we thought. And I would note that hanging baskets will be going up downtown. Got a new vendor we've been working on on that, so we'll see how that goes, but they should be going up downtown in the next week. So, any other questions? Oh, yes, two other things. The Arts Master Plan RFP will be issued on April 29th. And the towing RFP is almost ready. We need about two more weeks to finalize things and that, and then we'll put that out to bid as well.
Is that all?
The last thing I was gonna mention to you, we did have a meeting last night that the mayor and I attended, representatives from the other cities. It start the SLOST process. We call it SLOST 8, some of the other cities think it's SLOST 6. We don't know exactly which SLOST it is, except the fact that it will start in 2024. The SLOST is, I did email out the presentation to you earlier today, so you've got a copy of that. A couple of notes I would make on that is that between the last SLOST and this SLOST, the City of Canton has increased about 2% in the total population of Cherokee County. The county, the county has decreased, the unincorporated portion of the county has decreased by about 3%, and about 2 of that was gained in the City of Canton. Our estimated take of the SLOST after you back out the Tier 1 project, which is the courthouse expansion that the county has in, is about $43 million. Having said that, our current take of SLOST is $24 million. So that will show you the growth in sales tax just during that period of time. The cities will be getting together, the leadership of the cities will be getting together over the next couple of weeks to talk about strategy negotiation, make sure everybody is okay with the proposal or if there's any things that we want to see changed in that. And the county would like to see some response as it relates to projects later in the month of May. And so at some point, we'll probably want to get together and talk about those buckets and what they might look like. And ultimately, though, it's gonna be on the ballot for this November. It will not start until 2024. So if for whatever reason it doesn't make the ballot this year or if it were to be denied by the voters, there's an opportunity to get back on the ballot. So, be thinking about your wish list, $43 million.
Careful.
With this group, I know it will be spent very quickly. Lots of ideas.
How many millions?
I'm happy to answer.
Forty?
How many millions?
Forty-three.
Forty-three, okay.
And that's just based on population breakdown.
That's a lot of playground equipment.
Oh, I thought she was gonna say that's a lot of cats.
Well, I did have a question now that you've mentioned it. Is there gonna be a cat on the new mural?
Which new mural?
The Lee Street mural.
Oh, I, I'm not aware of a cat, Ms. McGee. I can see what we can do.
We need to discuss.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any other questions you might have about anything.
Question, is that, was that your question?
Okay, okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Peppers.
Thank you.
So just a general, a general thing, I sat down probably about five or six weeks ago with around Canton and had coffee with them one morning and they, they probably were disappointed that they did that. They wanted just an update on the roadmap and where we're going and, you know, quick update. And three hours later, I was still talking about all the things we were doing and accomplishing, but they got real excited and they're gonna be publishing a monthly article on each tenant and what we're doing in each of those tenants. And so I just want to kind of point out tonight that, you know, we not only talked about things that related to eight tenants in our roadmap, but we, you know, took action on projects that moved eight tenants forward, creating great neighborhoods, celebrating the diversity of our community, advancing regional economic success, enhancing historic downtown Canton, sustaining our national environment, connecting citizens to parks and recreation, improving infrastructure for future demand. And thanks to you guys, leading with excellence. So it's just really satisfying to be able here and do good work and not just talk about it, but actually do the work. And I want to thank our council and their leadership on these issues. I want to thank our, our staff, Team Canton. I want to thank our boards and commissions, our citizens who do work on our boards and commissions and are getting involved as well. I mean, I think as we, you know, celebrate Georgia Cities tonight and, you know, we say, our resolution says we encourage all citizen city government officials and employees to do everything possible to ensure that this week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. I think we have lots to celebrate in the city tonight and every day. I mean, I think, you know, I talk to other cities and mayors all the time and they're just kind of in awe of Canton and, you know, there are a lot of challenges out there in this, in this environment. And I think we're, we're very lucky, but it's not just luck, I think it's good management. The city has no general obligation debt. We're doing all these things and we have no general obligation debt. We have the lowest taxes in Cherokee County and some of the lowest in the state. We're very financially stable because we're financially, fiscally responsible. And I think most importantly, we invested in a vision and a strategic plan and we are planning our work and working our plan. So tonight was, I think, great evidence of that. So very proud of you guys and so thank you for your great work. That's all I have to say, so.
I was gonna say, I thought, I didn't, I didn't mean to, I know we're supposed to be at the end, but I wanted to throw in, we, on the Bowling Park basketball court, we sent today to the Cherokee High School Art Department a call for student submissions for mural concepts to put on that basketball court. And then we'll choose, the Canton Cultural Arts Commission will choose a winning concept and then that student will get to work with a professional muralist to put art on that basketball court. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew about that. And then I just wanted to give a shout-out to the Downtown Development Authority board members for all their hard work over the last year on the Jones Building. And I just wanted to generally say that I am grateful to be serving on city council, especially on a night like tonight. And I, just to echo what you already said, I know that this group will be on to the next thing in the morning, but like tonight is major on everything from the Jones Building to the, a park in South Canton. A park in South Canton, like it doesn't exist, it's never existed. To the Housing Authority potential, it's just a really exciting night and I don't want us to just skip it. I want us to really notice it.
You ready to celebrate?
Yes.
Well said, and I think as we celebrate Georgia Cities Week, again, I think we do have a lot to celebrate in the coolest small town in America, so can thank you all, so. Anything else? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
All papers say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, nay? We are adjourned. I hate to adjourn, so.